Okay, hello everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We are joined with Dr. Taylor again for our Gen Chem Study Session 4. So as per last time, Dr. Taylor is going to be going over review materials for Exam 4 and answering any questions that you may have. So feel free to post those in the Q&amp;A chat, and we'll be going over them one by one. Fabulous. Thank you. All right, so just again, general reminder, so Exam 4 is this Saturday, so that is December 2nd. It's at 10:00 AM. Again, I will be reposting. It's the same rooms that we've been doing, but we will repost those as well, just to make everything nice and clear. It covers three chapters, Chapter 9, 10, and 11. And I actually pulled this information from the announcement in the 701 section. So we do have that Chemistry 1311 701 hanging out in eLearning. And so I actually pulled this out of the announcement section because there's specific things we don't include, and it's a little strange. Because out of Chapter 9, it's like parts of 9.4, it's part of 9.6. Chapter 10, it's particular calculations that we basically promised we won't do. One actual whole section, which is lattice energy. And 11 has similar issues where it's parts, or it's the calculations related to certain things, but we'll still do the conceptual version of them. So that's why this is kind of detailed. It is hanging out in 701 section because the things that we're excluding, except for the Section 10.8 lattice energy, everything else is either we're going to do this conceptually, so there's no calculations on it, but the concept you still need to know, or we're ignoring parts of a section. So it's not as easy to communicate what parts we're taking out, because it's not just nice giant pieces. It's a lot of little pieces that we're getting specific on. So what I did go ahead and do is, because I know there's hopefully questions popping up in the chat, but what I did go ahead and do is I went ahead and prepared a couple of things out of actually the end of Chapter 10, because these are questions that often come up. So I've got that information. And so while questions are popping up in the chat, I'm just going to go ahead and move forward. Actually, I'll go ahead and, are there questions in the chat already, out of curiosity?
There are two right now.
Wow, you guys are fast. Okay, what are those?
Okay, the first one is, for Chapter 10, what kind of math themes and equations should we focus for? Because there are many different kinds on the questions which can be puzzling to remember. And the second one is, should we be able to identify something as both a Bronsted acid and base? Also, an oxidizing slash reducing agent consists of the whole reactant, while the oxidized reduced species consists of a specific element slash compound, right?
Okay, fabulous. Okay, so go ahead and start with question about Bronsted acids and bases. So reminder, when we talk about Bronsted acids and bases, we're talking about this notion of a proton donor. In the case of an acid, proton donor. In the case of a base, we're talking about a proton acceptor. So the notion that something can be both is something that at least in particular cases should be something you should be familiar with. So a really good example of that is actually water. So water works really well as both a Bronsted acid or a Bronsted base. So for example, we could pair water with ammonia. And if we pair water with ammonia, then this goes back and forth. But you wind up with something like NH4+ plus the hydroxide. Conversely, you could pair the water with something like, I'm thinking, which one do I want? We'll go ahead and do a weak acid, which is also going to go back and forth. And so you're going to wind up with H3O+. So here my plus, you know, two minus. So in the top case, my water is moving to hydroxide. So this is donating a proton, it's losing a proton. So this is a proton donor here, which makes it an acid. But down here, something different happens. And so here, I have, it's gaining a proton, it's accepting a proton. And so this here makes the water a base. So there are cases where we would expect you to basically recognize it as being able to do both. Another good example of something where we could expect you to recognize that it could be either is looking at I'll just draw it. This, this species. Because this should remind you of sulfuric acid. So this notion, or a different, maybe not that one. Because we could have, we could have an interesting discussion about that one. Let's actually do something that looks similar, but is not related to a strong acid. Same idea though. Basically, you've got a polyatomic ion hanging out here with one proton and a negative sign. So basically, this can go either way as well. So because it has a proton in front, it could lose the proton. And there's my carbonate. Or because it has a negative sign, it could also gain a proton and go back to carbonic acid. So basically, keeping mindful of the things that should help remind you of Bronsted acids and bases in general. So a proton in front often being indicative of an acid, a negative sign perhaps being indicative of, I'm going to say, the potential to be a base. Because since bases can accept protons, a lot of times, bases can be negative. They don't have to be. But that's kind of one of those options. So you can kind of look for those pieces and parts that may help you recognize them and what that tells you about them. So hopefully that helps with acids and bases in the Bronsted definition. What's the other thing? Oh, redox. So I'll explain the sigh momentarily. So let's, let's grab a redox reaction. We're just going to assume that this one happens. We will do aluminum metal plus, we'll make this iron two chloride. We'll pretend that this is a solution. There we go. To give you iron, or sorry, that's aluminum chloride and iron metal. This would then be aqueous. Let's see, get myself quiet enough space. So when, so first of all, backing up, anything that is an element is going to have an oxidation state of zero. So those are zero. Then here, since I have chlorine, chloride ions, those are going to be negative one, which means that then I can figure out essentially, because I have two chloride ions, this iron should be a positive two, because this chloride again is a negative one, and there's three of them, this aluminum is going to be a positive three. You'll notice they've actually balanced this reaction. Thanks to my chlorines, this is definitely not balanced. But the irony is, is that to do a redox reaction, I don't actually need it to be balanced. I can, it'll probably make us feel better if it's balanced. And then three goes here, and then a two goes there. Now it's balanced. But the important thing for a redox reaction is going to be these numbers up above. So I have aluminum, starting at zero. Positive two, or so aluminum begins at zero, and it goes to positive three. So that's aluminum. And then iron is going to go from positive two to zero. So here's iron going, starting at positive two, going to zero. And there was aluminum, starting at zero, and going to positive three, an oxidation states. So we can kind of look at those arrows and recognize the fact that since iron here is going from positive two to zero, that is becoming more negative. I know it doesn't actually become negative itself, but it goes, it goes towards the negative side of my number lines. It'd be negative one, negative two, negative three. So that is going to be reduction. It's a reduction in charge. It is gaining electrons because the charge is becoming more negative. Conversely, my aluminum is headed towards the positive side. It goes from zero to positive three. So because of that, this is my oxidation. It becomes more positive. In order to become more positive, it is losing electrons. Loss is, loss of electrons is oxidation. So, the game, when we talk about this is first of all, talking about the aluminum makes our life really easy. So let's start with that one, and then we'll talk about where the complexity part comes in. So aluminum, it's only one thing. It's just aluminum metal. So if I want to talk about aluminum being the species oxidized, that's what it is. It's aluminum, and it's only aluminum, and I don't have to think about whether it's the aluminum or the aluminum in the compound, like the iron is going to be. It's just one thing. Now, the other thing with this is that I can also talk about not just the species oxidized, but I can also talk about the reducing agent. And that is also going to be aluminum. So the reducing agent is both, this is the species oxidized. They are the same thing, more or less. In this case, they are exactly identical, because aluminum is aluminum, and there's nothing, there's no other pieces and no other parts, and nothing else to consider. So the species oxidized is aluminum, the reducing agent is aluminum. That's what we have. Because the reducing agent is essentially what allows reduction to happen. If it's going to allow reduction to happen, it has to be able to provide electrons so that something else can be reduced. If it's going to provide electrons, it has to be able to lose those electrons. Something that loses electrons is the species oxidized. Also, I don't know if y'all can see the look on my face as I walk through all of that, but it's a combination of, gosh, don't I wish that this language was different? And concentrating to make sure that I say it correctly, because this is this language is archaic, it's old, and it's not based on how things actually work. It's, the language is based on what they thought was happening back in like the 1800s or 1700s, I forget which. Which means that the words basically are nonsensical. So you, they're memorized language. So, species oxidized, reducing agent, both aluminum. Now comes for the, the part that the question was actually asking about. So I want to talk about the species reduced or the, in this case, now oxidizing agent. So this is where, when we want to talk about the species reduced, we do want to talk about the iron. But the thing is, as you can see from all of the numbers and the values that I have above everything, the chloride doesn't change. So this chloride ion, it's along for the ride, but it's not actually participating in the reaction. It's not participating in the chemistry. It doesn't do anything. So to say that the chloride ion gets reduced is wrong. Like, it doesn't do anything at all. So when you talk about the species reduced, a better way to phrase that would really be to say either the iron in the iron two chloride, or you could potentially also call that the iron two plus, since that's the ion that is there in that ionic compound. This, the iron, the iron chloride, iron two chloride is more likely to be the way that we would phrase things, only because we want language that will work even if something is not an ionic compound. If we were going to try to refer to something like the carbon in an organic compound, we wouldn't say that that carbon has a charge to it if it's in a in a compound, in a molecule, because molecules don't have individual charges. So we would refer to that as something like iron in the iron two chloride. So I'm just actually going to get rid of that. We'd really call it that. Because in this case, we're trying to recognize the fact that iron is the actual thing that's doing the chemistry. But we would still try to reflect the fact that we're talking about a reactant. So that's the reason why the iron two chloride is still present, or why I was like, or maybe you could talk about the Fe2+ because the thing is, is that we definitely want to term this as being a reactant. Because we, whenever we're talking about the pieces of a redox reaction, everything is all about the reactants. The products help tell the story. The products help tell us what's going on. But everything in the reactants is what we describe when we're talking about an actual reaction. So here, so there's the species reduced. The oxidizing agent is just the whole thing. Because, because you can't, if you were going to set up this reaction, if you were going to like grab the chemical compounds from a stockroom and go get the bottles and make all the things, you can't separate the iron from the iron two chloride. You have to have the whole thing there. So when we talk about the oxidizing agent, we're talking about the thing we would go grab off of the shelf to make the reaction happen. So it's a way we talk about the language of these reactions, that when we talk about the oxidizing agent, we then are just talking about if I go to grab something off of the shelf, in which case that has to be a neutral compound. It has to be the whole thing. So hopefully that clears up that confusion. I know that that's a lot of nitpicky details. What's going to happen on the exam is you're just going to see us having written language that reflects this for you. And you're just going to be focusing really on choosing the reactants that is appropriate. It's still nice to know this information, so that way you're not thrown off if the answer choices don't look like you expect them to look. Because this language will be reflected in those answer choices. So it's still good information. But that's, that's what's happening here. Also, if it makes you feel any better, frankly, oxidizing agents and reducing agents, I think finally made sense to me when I was in a lab and I had to make the experiment I was doing have a reducing environment, or a, yeah. And then I was like, oh, I'm going to go to the shelf and go grab a reducing agent, because I need the thing in the beaker to be reduced. Oh, okay. So this is one where frankly, I think lab helps a lot. Where am I? Bronsted acids and bases, we did that. Okay, I saved this one for last. Math themes and equations. Okay, so yeah, um, so, okay, so when I think about Chapter 10, when I think about Chapter 10, and I'm thinking about math things only. So if I'm going to think about Chapter 10 and math, so right now, I am completely ignoring all conceptual things, just thinking about the math. Here's what that list looks like to me. Stoichiometry. This is the one where I can have like A goes to B, A goes to 2B, Delta H is equal to negative 10 kilojoules per mole, and then I tell you something like if two moles of A react, I want B, I don't want A, I want B, sorry. It's this, I did prepare questions in advance, but if two, no, I don't want just pick, fine, two moles of, no, I don't want the number two anymore. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Deep breath, everybody, deep breath. If, actually, I'm just going to make it 2.1. If 2.1 moles of B react, how much energy is released? So that looks something like this. I got 2.1 moles of B that's given, and then I'm just going to use my reaction over here. That says if I have two moles of B, I have this much energy. This is the reaction, this is the type of math that people typically forget that we've done, mostly because of fall break. Sorry, we're going to say energy release, so we're going to get that negative sign. Kilojoules released. So there's a math. Math one, it's not an equation. Notice, there's no equation. It's stoichiometry. I'm going to pull things out of the chemical equation and use that. It's not an equation. It's a math thing, though. Good job saying math theme, by the way, because that definitely helped me remember stoichiometry. Two, calorimetry. These equations are the ones that look like this. Yes, I will define these variables. Just give me a moment, but I need to write them down. Boom. This is heat, and this is specific heat. And that's mass. And this is the change in temperature. Change in temperature. Which means in this equation, those are all the same except for the big capital C, which big capital C is specific heat capacity. Ah, no, it was just heat capacity. Sorry, Alex calls it specific heat capacity. I don't like it. I prefer to call S specific heat and C heat capacity. But I helped people with Alex enough heat capacity that I got a little bit confused. Heat capacity. And technically, because everything else is the same, we could also say that SM is equal to C, because that is, that is true. So these are the ones that usually have two different flavors. Flavor one is for A is basically like a metal pellet goes into water. Dot, dot, dot. Because there's temperature, they'll give you a temperature for the metal pellet and a temperature for the water, and tell you what changed, and give you other information. But that's what that one typically, so you may go back to the notes, look at what we're talking about, the metal pellet. But metal pellet goes into water, tell me the specific heat of the metal, tell me the final temperature, tell me various things. The other one is sometimes something like, what food shall we burn in our bomb calorimeter? How about a coffee bean? Why not? A coffee bean is burned in a bomb calorimeter. And this calorimeter, there we go, I can spell. The thing is, is that if we're talking about a bomb calorimeter, this one typically says bomb calorimeter in it. This one also typically provides with a heat capacity of blank. So the bomb calorimeter questions typically have fewer numbers in them, and will give you more information straight up because of the way that it has to be phrased. Because in a bomb calorimeter, the, there are metal pieces in there that do also absorb heat. So you can't actually break that one down into its component parts. The metal pellet going into a cup of water, however, is a lot more simplistic. And ironically, because it's a simpler setup, we can give you a lot more numbers and values for what's happening. But that's kind of, that's a bird's eye view of that one. Three, I think of these as finding Delta H of the reaction. And that's the one where you can do Hess's law. You can do Delta H of formation, Delta H of formation, and you can do bond interval piece. And all of those have math that go with them. Which I know is kind of a cheat, but it's been about a half, it's hasn't been quite a half an hour. It's been almost a half an hour. Also, those three are the three things that I made sure that I had examples of, just because I've been doing exam reviews for a while. And those are the ones that I can't do off of, off the cuff very well. Although you guys watched me have to rewrite a problem like three times in order to just do something with moles. So those, that's the way I think about the math in Chapter 10. So I usually think about it in three parts, which have some parts to them. So the first one of that is stoichiometry, thinking about using the chemical reaction and the value of Delta H. Potentially, some grams to moles conversions could be in there as well. Then calorimetry, which are these two equations. And a lot of like pulling numbers out of the problem to make them fit in these equations. Somewhere in there should also be that notion of the heat of the system is equal and opposite to the surroundings, because that one sometimes comes up. So that's calorimetry. And then finding Delta H. And the hard thing is, is that Hess's law, Delta H of formation, and bond interval piece. The weird thing is, is that these questions often are worded similarly to each other, but the information you have is very different. And therefore, what you do with it is very different. The calorimetry questions, the questions actually look kind of different, and you're using the same equations for them. These guys, the questions are actually worded really similarly, but you're just going to look at the information that they gave you. Because Hess's law will have chemical reactions. That's the only way you can solve those, is if we give you a whole bunch of chemical reactions, plural, multiple. Delta H of formation is going to have a table with molecules and compounds in it. You have to for those. And bond interval piece will have a table with bonds. Like HO bonds. Delta H of formation would have a table with molecules like water. Now we're closer to the half hour mark. So are there other questions right now?
Yes. Okay, the first one is, how can I identify the different types of reactions, such as redox, precipitation, et cetera, just by looking at the balanced equation?
Okay.
And then, what do we have to memorize for this test?
Okay.
And then, can you go over kinetic equations? Also, are we going to have to know the formula, or just the concept of kinetic energy?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I said today. Cool, other things? Great, okay. So the kinetic equations is actually fastest. So we, so the two, the two kinetic equations I know I usually put up is, one of them's not actually an equation. It's just kinetic energy is proportional to temperature. It looks like this. But this is a nice reminder that essentially, as kinetic energy, this is for gases, by the way. This is gases, this is Chapter 11. As kinetic energy increases, the temperature also, actually, should be the other way around. As temperature increases, kinetic energy increases. As the temperature increases, the kinetic energy increases. Because temperature is the thing that we, as human beings, can affect. So therefore, we usually talk about as the temperature increases, the kinetic energy increases. But the other one that often goes along with that, and that I know I definitely put on the board, is kinetic energy is equal to one half MV squared. kinetic energy is equal to one half mv squared, or your textbook uses U for velocity. The only reason why I did this is to point out the fact that kinetic energy has two components to it, which is mass. And technically, this is velocity, although because we're dealing with gases, this is speed. I don't honestly, if you love physics, we can have the conversation about speed versus velocity. Um, for those of you that would like that conversation, the very short answer is for gases, we do not care about the vector component. So therefore we do not care about velocity. Um, if that didn't mean anything to you, that's fine. Just understand that we're, we're really actually gonna talk about speed in terms of gases. Uh, and there are reasons for that. But you don't actually have to care about the reasons. That's for later classes. Um, oh, general chemistry. Sorry, every once in a while I get really amused by the things that we just ignore and that would probably make, um, so many of my colleagues cringe to hear me say that particular phrase. Um, the only reason why this is important is because we could have something where you have different gases. Um, we'll just use, say, like hydrogen and, we're just use two, hydrogen and oxygen. Um, so this has a molar mass of about two. I know it tells 2.016. Um, and the oxygen is about 32. Um, and if we put these at the same temperature, both at room temperature, um, 25 degrees Celsius, we can ask two different questions and you wind up with two different answers. Um, the first question is, um, which has the greater kinetic energy? And because temperature is proportional to energy, they are the same. If they are both at 25 degrees Celsius, then they have the same energy. So they are the same. It's a trick question. If they're asking you about energy, then just temperature is proportional to kinetic energy and we're done. Uh, if the temperature is the same, the kinetic energy is the same, it's over. Question's done. Moving on to the next one. Um, if though, they ask you which has the greater speed, this is where technically this equation comes into play. Because if we're talking about speed, then the mass matters. Because while their energy may be the same, the greater their masses, the lower their speed will be. The lower their mass, the greater their speed will be. Either way, you wanna talk about that. Um, so the greater the mass, the lower the speed. Um, I will not grab it because it's not quite within range, but I brought a bowling ball and a little Styrofoam ball to class. Give the both the same energy, that bowling ball goes a lot slower than the little fast one. Well, fast one is also not within iron's reach. It is behind me. But it's, I don't want to fall over in my chair. Um, so if I'm looking for greater speeds, uh, I would like the lower the mass, the faster it goes. Uh, which for the example I've given is hydrogen. Um, so hydrogen is faster. So again, you don't necessarily need to be able to use that equation to understand that if you push a bowling ball and a Styrofoam ball with the same energy, the bowling ball goes slower. Cause that's really what that's asking. But this is the part where the concept comes in. If they do have the same energy, same energy for us is gonna mean same temperature when we come to gases. So if some, if two things have the same temperature, that means they're gonna have the same energy. That's one of those. Lovely, lovely. Um, things to memorize. Okay, so I am the person, I always give this kind of clarification. I am the person that if you walk up to me on the street and you ask me to name Snow White's seven dwarves, I will confidently name six and forget one. And then if you ask me like an hour later, I will confidently name you six again, and I will have forgotten a different one. So let's see how I do on this list of things to memorize. Um, things I know you have to memorize. You have to memorize, um, the strong acids and strong bases. There are seven strong acids. There are eight strong bases. They are, can I already pull this up? Oh, that's the wrong chapter. Look at me having done something besides chemistry. Sorry. The number of times that I open up honestly any Microsoft product and the only thing that I've done is chemistry in it. Um, it happens to me all the time. Um, so this is a slide I usually use for this because do not start subtitles. Um, um, so all your strong bases are actually over here on the left-hand side of the periodic table. So lithium hydroxide, sodium hydroxide, potassium hydroxide, rubidium hydroxide, cesium hydroxide. That's five. Calcium hydroxide, strontium hydroxide, barium hydroxide. Strong bases. Uh, strong acids. Hydrochloric acid, hydrobromic acid, hydroiodic acid, nitric acid, chloric acid, perchloric acid, sulfuric acid. There they are. Um, so that's those. So eight strong bases hanging out on your periodic table. Some of your strong acids are on the periodic table as well, but four of the seven are not because they're coming from polyatomic ions. So there's those. Um, the other thing to memorize is hanging out in precipitation stuff, um, which is your solubility rules. Um, the nice thing with solubility rules is your, you've got some things that are always soluble. There's never any exceptions to these. Um, so, and these are your alkali metals, lithium, sodium, potassium, rubidium, cesium, and the ammonium ion. Uh, and then some other anions. And then, and then you have to get into exceptions. When you start to watch the exceptions, though, realize that the exceptions basically build. So this is silver, mercury and lead. And then when you go to more exceptions, there's still silver, mercury and lead, and you also added calcium, strontium, barium. Then when you go to insoluble things, things that are always gonna be precipitates, things are always gonna be rocks. The only soluble exceptions are the things that we claimed were always soluble. So the lovely thing is that these should go together. Um, and the main reason why we add calcium and strontium is we basically are gonna claim that all of your strong bases are soluble and anything else with hydroxide is insoluble. And that's where this comes from. So these are also things to memorize. But again, there are pieces and parts of this to kind of help you out, like noticing that it's the strong bases that are the soluble hydroxides. Um, are there things for redox that I would recommend memorizing? So I don't, I always have mixed feelings about table 9.5 because when you look at table 9.5 in the textbook, it's got all of this like gabaldy cook about exceptions. When the point of table 9.5 is it's a rank order from top to bottom. And the exceptions are just to note that the order matters. So what I mean by this, so table 9.5 is your rank order for doing oxidation numbers. Fluorines at the top, then group 1A or 2A metals. So your alkali metals, your alkali earth, alkaline earth metals, then hydrogen, then oxygen, then group 7A. When you look at the exceptions, um, and I, because this is so small, I'm just gonna go back to note. Um, I'm just gonna pull up one of the exceptions of hydrogen. Um, so it's saying that there's exceptions. Oh, I forgot to keep listing things. Um, solubility rules. Uh, I could go ahead and say table 9.5, but really just the order, just the order of table 9.5 because the exception it's giving for hydrogen is something like sodium hydride. Well, if you've memorized the order of table 9.5, fluorines at the top, then group 1A and 2A, then hydrogen, then oxygen, then the remaining halogens. That's the order of table 9.5. So if you know that you're starting at the top and moving down, that means that when I'm looking for oxidation numbers, I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna double check my periodic table. But here's sodium. It is group 1A. So because sodium is group 1A, sodium gets to essentially its oxidation state first, which is plus one. This whole thing has to be neutral, which means the hydrogen's negative one. When you go and look, and that's what the exception is. So when you go and look at table 9.5 in, and the fact that it has exceptions, the exceptions are for when hydrogen is with group 1A or 2A. So it's really just the order of the table is what you need. You don't need to memorize all the exceptions. Um, and the oxidation number is just from the periodic table. So you also don't need to memorize the oxidation number that they gave you in this lovely column here because it's from the periodic table. That's all that is. Okay, um, other things to memorize. Um, oh, um, I would memorize. So I don't think about this as being a memorized thing. But if you, because I think of this as being a definition, but it's a, it's a good definition to memorize. So we'll, I'll go, I'm gonna go ahead and add this one in. Um, it's the definition of molarity. Um, so molarity being equal to moles divided by leaders. Cause we're gonna have a conversation this evening. So I don't know what the answer is. Um, I don't think about this as an equation. I think about this as a definition. We give you equations on the exam. We don't give you definitions on the exam. I think that this is a definition. I don't know that my colleagues agree, though. So I'm gonna put it as a memorization thing here now. You can ask folks, you can ask your instructors on Wednesday, myself included, uh, if this is on the potentially useful information or not. I don't know. Um, other things I would memorize. That's all I can think of right now. I'm certain there are more things that would be good to know, but when I think about memorizing, I think like regurgitate. Uh, I don't think about like understand. So that's why I can't think of anything like in the gases chapter. Cause we're gonna give you guys PV equals NRT and everything else is concepts. So I'm, I'm gonna go with this list. Gonna see if there's other things. Cause also I would definitely ask other people the same question and see what answer you get. Um, cause we've got some really intelligent folks in the peer tutoring center, uh, as SI leaders in the chemistry clinic. And I would just see what they said because other things are, other things are great. Um, identifying different types of reactions. So if you're asking to do this, this is definitely a chapter nine idea. Identifying different types of reactions. One of the things that will help. Um, so, cause the difficult thing is a lot of times it's the analysis that's you're going to need to do for a redox reaction. But some things in general that can help. Um, if your products are some ionic compound, um, by which we mean salts and water, um, especially if you're making water in the products, this is likely uh, acid base. So if you make water in the products, there's some other ionic compound over here, this is likely an acid base reaction. I say likely because I would, oh, I can actually show you why. Um, so an ionic compound and water, acid base. Um, so this would be for something like, um, just go ahead and do the classic one, HCl plus NaOH. This then would get you actual salts. Um, that's ionic compound and water. So likely acid base reaction. Um, so the reason why I have likely in there is because this this is a gas. Actually, they're gases, which helps a lot. Uh, if it's an acid base reaction, these are all gonna be aqueous, except for the water. That's a liquid. Aqueous. If I didn't scribble so much, you could tell that that is supposed to be aqueous. I know I jammed it in there. Sorry, I'm gonna rewrite this because someone's gonna look at this and be like, that looks like it's like not aqueous and I, I want all of these to be aqueous. Except for the water, that's a liquid. Um, here, these are gases. But I'm still gonna make water. Now I didn't balance this. That's a gas. So it's not, it's not balanced. It's got a problem. Um, put a two right there. And two right there. Now it's balanced. Um, this, granted, it's got gases in it. Um, so, so it does have gases. Where these are aqueous. But it does also make water. Um, this is a redox reaction. Now, part of the way I know that, by the way, and this isn't, this is, won't always be the, be true for every redox reaction ever. Um, but I have something that's an element. Um, I have an element. Not any part of a compound. It's just an element. If you do have one of those, that pretty much has to be a redox reaction. Yeah. Yeah, it's a redox reaction. Uh, because basically everything that we're doing with acids and bases has to do with Bronsted definitions, which means you're gonna exchange protons. So something either has to be able to accept a proton, donate a proton. Those are not elements. Um, same game we're doing precipitation reactions. Precipitation reactions are gonna be double displacement reactions. Um, also not elements. Um, the thing is you can have a redox reaction without having an element in there. Um, in which case you just have to do all the oxidation states to figure that out, which is yucky. Um, but precipitation reactions, we do also call those double displacement reactions. So if we're doing something like, um, sodium carbonate, yeah, sodium carbonate's in that list, isn't it? So there sometimes comes a problem where, um, at some point in chapter nine, I start thinking a little bit more like I'm in Jin Kim two and I take a deep breath and be like Jin Kim one, Jin Kim one, ah, carbonate is in here. I thought it was, yes. Okay, good. Um, so what I mean by double displacement is, um, hold on. To think about this, just one more moment. Um, silver, silver is lovely. Um, silver nitrate, lovely. Also all aqueous. That's supposed to be the letter Q. Aqueous. What I mean by double displacement is I'm gonna take this anion and this anion and swap the cations. So I'm gonna wind up with sodium nitrate. Also aqueous. And that is gonna be silver carbonate. That is gonna be a solid. Um, so precipitation reaction should have a solid in there somewhere. And you should have basically swapped your cations and anions around. So those are gonna be double displacement reactions. Uh, so this is a precipitation reaction. The, the main thing that makes these a little bit difficult is if you have to find something that is only a redox reaction. If you're looking for redox, you have to do all the oxidation states. Um, Um. Because your oxidation numbers won't change in a precipitation reaction. Um. They, they won't change in an acid base reaction. They will change in a redox reaction. Um, which is part of the reason why having an element is often a sign of a redox reaction. Because then you actually do have something that's definitely changing oxidation numbers. Um, but that's really the only way to know, know, um, changing oxidation numbers. But some of those other ones are at least signs of different reactions to help you along. I danced around a lot of things. Oh no, I've not got a straight line. Oh. There were three questions. And I answered those three questions. Lovely. It's been like another 20 minutes. So we'll go ahead and check in on the questions again and see how we're doing. Are there more questions at this point?
There are no questions right now.
Okay. That means I get to do the stuff I pre-prepared. So, uh, I'm going to hop over and look at this question. Um, it says, find the change in alpha P of the reaction based on the information given. And there is a reaction and I probably should have done a little like delta H equals question mark. Um, and I have bonds. Um, I, that's what I have. I have oxygen to hydrogen in some numbers and some oxygen to oxygen, some numbers. And oxygen, double bond to action, some numbers. So what I'm going to walk through is the mathematics for this. Um, so because these are bonds, this is going to be, these are bonds. So therefore this is going to be a bond in full piece. I'm going to cheat, grab my notes. Um, so this is hydrogen peroxide. So that is going to be something like this. Um. Look at those lone pairs somewhere on there. Uh, I have two of them. Those are my reactants, my products. I'm going to go ahead and draw in blue. Here's one water. Here's two waters. Uh, do you know that they did go ahead and give us coefficients? You're going to see us give you a lot of coefficients, especially in chapter 10 style material, um, because the number of molecules that you are reacting matter, uh, for that value of alpha P. So we're going to just give you that information. Hold on. I can feel my little scratchy throat. Didn't want to talk today. Um, so basically I've gone ahead and drawn the Lewis structures out. So bond enthalpies will require a little bit of Lewis structures. They will be small Lewis structures. They've got to be small because it's got to be something that you guys can do in a short period of time. Uh, we might also draw them for you. That's also possible. But might look something like this. So now what I'm going to do, so I have my reactants, I have my products, I have them drawn out. So now what I can do is basically count the number of bonds that I have. So starting with my hydrogens and oxygens, I've got one, two, three, four. So I have four oxygen, hydrogen, or hydrogen, oxygen bonds, either way. I also have two oxygen, oxygen, single bonds. Have two of those. Then coming over here for my waters. I have more of those oxygen, hydrogen bonds. I have four again. And the only thing I have other here is an oxygen, oxygen double bond. So one oxygen, oxygen double bond. So what I'm going to do is I have my counts essentially for everything. So in bond enthalpies, everything that's a reactant, we are going to pretend that we are breaking everything apart into individual atoms. So I'm going to break apart all four of these hydrogen oxygen bonds. I'm going to break apart both the two oxygen, oxygen, single bonds. Since I'm going to break them apart into individual atoms, these are going to require energy. So this is all going to be positive. So a positive sign for my four hydrogen oxygen or oxygen, hydrogen bonds and for my two oxygen, oxygen, single bonds. Then in bond enthalpies, I form then all of my products from the individual atoms. So since I'm forming all of those from individual atoms, those are going to be more stable. So since I'm forming the bonds, that's going to be exothermic. So that means I'm going to subtract all of these. So my four oxygen, hydrogen bonds and my one oxygen, oxygen double bond. Now comes the part where I wish I had not scribbled over everything everywhere. This is getting real messy already. It's okay. I'll move the other problem to make it prettier. So this then is four. So now I'm going to pull numbers off of my table. So I have four of my oxygen, hydrogen at four sixty. So four times four sixty plus two times my oxygen, oxygen, single bond. So two times one hundred and forty-two oxygen, oxygen, single bond. Minus four times the oxygen, hydrogen bond. That's still four sixty plus one times the oxygen, oxygen double bond. That's four ninety-eight point seven. So now I've got my numbers in here. I just have to add everything together appropriately. And when we do all of that, we get a grand total of negative two fourteen point seven. I can do, double check on my units. Because all those over here, they're in kilojoules per mol. So that's my value of delta H. Sorry about that. I realized it would be messier to mute myself on Teams. I meant to I'm in my office, so I actually have my handy dandy headset. It has the mute button on there. Am I using that? No. My mistake. So bond enthalpies does wind up looking like reactants minus products. So you might have noticed that that everything that was a reactant was actually a positive value. Everything that's a product is actually a negative value. That's because we break. Um. We have to break the reactants and we have to form the products. So breaking everything requires energy that's positive. Forming all of our products is going to make everything more stable. That releases energy. So bond enthalpies does have what looks like reactants minus products. So just to have a little breath. I'm actually going to do a Hess's law question next. Um, I did not put all my tables in there. Uh, here's what the Hess's law problem looks like. Um. It was going to say finds the delta H of the reaction for I'm going to make this bigger in a minute for the following. Where I just said, I said four D goes to A plus B using A plus B goes to two C. And I decided that that should be positive twelve kilojoules per mol. And then we're also going to use two D goes to C at twenty-nine positive twenty-nine kilojoules per mol. Okay. Now I make all of this bigger so y'all can actually see it. Twenty. Okay. So because this has chemical reactions down here, this is how I know that this is Hess's law. Uses reactions, whole reactions. Now I am cheating a little bit because I don't have um, actual molecules in here. I'm choosing As and Bs. Um, if you guys look back at old exams and you see As and Bs, that was probably me. Um. Because writing a Hess's law question without that is more complicated and takes more time. So usually I choose As and Bs. Uh, also that way I know it's unique. Um. Because I just made it up. So what we are going to do for this is we're just going to basically start from left to right. So this starts off with four D. Uh, I have something that has D in it because I have enough. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to multiply everything in here by two. So four D is then going to go to two C. And because I multiplied this by two in order to get that, I'm also going to multiply this, uh, my twenty-nine by two. So that's going to get me positive fifty-eight kilojoules per mol. Then the next thing I need is I need A and I have A. Um, but what you'll notice is over here, this is in the products. And over here, it's in the reactants. So I have to fix that. Um, so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to flip these around. If I flip those around, then I have to flip the sign. So I was going to wind up changing my sign. That is just very messy looking, yucky. Um, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to have two C goes to A plus B. All I did was flip the reaction around. So I'm just going to flip the sign. So that's negative twelve kilojoules per mol. Then I just get to add everything together. My two C will cancel because I have this exact same on both sides of the reaction. So what I'm left with then is I'm left with four D goes to A plus B. And what I'm going to do is add these together as well. So that's fifty-eight plus negative twelve. That gives me a grand total of positive forty-six. Kilojoules per mol. So that's a Hess's law question. Using chemical reactions, moving them around to get the goal reaction. I'm just going to move this one down. Moving down, move it down, move it down. Sorry, I just want it's on a different place so that things don't get as messy as that other question did. Okay. Last one. Find the change in alpha P of the reaction based on the information given. And what's given this time is this time I have molecules. I just scribbled over everything. I don't want that. Um. I have molecules. And even better, what really should be here is this should have a little delta H of formation to kind of help remind me what this table is. That this is in fact going to use standard delta H of formation values. But I have molecules and when I do this, this is when I use products minus reactants. So the way that this one works is I'm just going to take whatever's in my products. So I need two times water as a liquid. Water as a liquid is right here. So two times negative two eighty-five point eight plus one times by oxygen. My oxygen is not in the table. Oh, here's another thing to memorize. I knew this was going to happen. Um. Elements in their standard state. So oxygen gas is the stuff that we breathe. Um, it's delta H of formation is just a zero. So if it was in the table, it would just be zero. With zero, we don't give it to you, uh, because the delta H of formation for an element in a standard state is zero. We just don't provide those. So you can either. So honestly, you still need to know that that should be zero because we can sometimes ask questions about that. But if it's not in the table, it's zero because it's an element. Minus all of the reactants. Nine, two times this guy. Negative one eighty-seven point eight. Uh, so this then becomes I just got negative one ninety-six. Can I hope that's correct? So these are some of the calculations out of chapter ten. So those are actually the three different ways to solve for delta H. Um, I did do them in a weird order. So I didn't follow the same order that the textbook goes in. Um. I really wanted Hess's law to be in the middle. So that's why I did them in a weird order. Is because I need something to break up bond enthalpies and delta H of formation. Are there any questions in the chat at this point?
There are none.
Alright, cool. So then I would just be your calculation monkey. Um, so let's do um, because may have seen it. Um, I know I was, I almost got to it in class today. Um. Let's see. What's one that she was told? I know, it's one of these. Um, my favorite. Yep. That is definitely what I want. Goes to sodium fluoride and water. I should put in all of the states of matter. Um, so what we're going to do is we are going to write the net ionic reaction. This is one that I like to go over for a couple of reasons. One, this is a weak acid. I know that it's HF. I know that all of the other halogens with hydrogen are strong, but this one's not. This is a weak acid. Uh, that fluorine, by the way, is so small and has such a high, um, electronegativity that it basically holds on to that hydrogen really strongly. Uh, and therefore it is a weak acid. It's not a strong acid. It's a weak acid. Uh, but this is strong, a base. Um, then this thing is sodium. So this is a completely soluble salt. And that's water as a liquid. So if we're going to do net ionic reaction, we're first going to do the ionic. Sorry, I wish I could deep breath. Um, so since this is a weak acid, um, I'm going to keep it all together. So weak species, because they don't ionize a hundred percent and maybe like one in a thousand or one in a million ionize. We therefore reflect that fact by keeping it all together um, in the ionic and net ionic reaction. You're most often going to see HF as HF, not as H plus and F minus. So therefore we draw it all together. Strong species, on the other hand, strong electrolytes. We do go ahead and separate because every single time you see sodium hydroxide, you would actually see sodium ions and hydroxide ions. So we draw those separately. Same game. I've got a soluble salts. So every time we would ever see sodium fluoride, we would always see a sodium ion. And we would see a fluoride ion every single time. Uh, water, it's a liquid. Every single time. Uh, water, it's a liquid, uh, therefore it, yeah, stays all together. Liquid. So, when I do my net ionic, uh, I just, I only wanna get rid of my spectator ions. Spectator ions have to be the same on both sides, so there's a sodium here and a sodium here. So sodium's my spectator, and that's the only one I have. So my net ionic is gonna be HF altogether, plus I get to get rid of the sodium, but I'm keeping the hydroxide. And then I'm got F, fluoride ion, F minus, and water. So, I'm skipping over some of the other examples. Because I'm hoping that this review is refreshing things in your memory, refreshing things in your mind. But there's one of those. Since um, I talked about it, but I didn't do it, but people asked about the math. Um, let's just go ahead and make up. Um, I'll make the, I'll make everything bigger in just a minute. Okay, um, a metal pellet at eighty-nine Celsius. Oh, A and M S, um, make it small, two point five grams. Um, is placed in a hundred mil gr- grams of water at a temperature of twenty-five degrees Celsius. The final temperature of both the metal and the water is two point, is not, no, whoa, twenty-six, twenty-six. Three six point two degrees Celsius. The specific heat of water is four point one eight four joules per gram per degree Celsius. I'll put the units in a minute. Uh, what is the specific heat of metal? Make it big, so everybody can see it. So, I was a little lazy. Degrees, degrees, per gram, per degree Celsius. Degrees. Okay, so. Oh gosh, there's lots of numbers. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna think about this. Here's, I've got water. Um, so information I have about the water. So first of all, actually, before I start to do that. Um, it asked me for the specific heat. I therefore need to find an equation with specific heat in it, like this one. So, um, good news. It asked for mass, and I have one of those. So this is for the metal, and this is for the metal, and that's for water. And that's for water, and that's for both the water and the pellet. And that's is also for water. So notice how I went ahead and did something weird to all the numbers in the problem. I am using colors, because I have access to colors, but I'm also using just different kinds of lines. So what I'm looking for is underlined twice, uh, everything relating to the metal is underlined once. The thing relating to the water has kind of a curvy bubbly line. Those sorts of things help me in making sense of a whole bunch of words. Uh, so one of the strategies that can be useful is to identify what things do I need, what things am I looking for? What am I gonna do with all this stuff? Um, and part of figuring out what you're gonna do with all this stuff is just knowing where all this stuff is. Uh, this is my metal. So the thing is, I have some information about the metal. I have the mass of the metal, that's two, well, would really help if I would copy the numbers correctly out of the problem. Two point five grams, and I have a change in temperature is final minus initial. Write that down, final minus initial. Final is twenty-six point two, initial is eighty-nine. So, bad news is now we are making stuff up as we go along. Minus eighty-nine. So I get that to be negative sixty-two point eight degrees Celsius. Uh, the change here, it should be negative, because my metal pellet is hot. It's going into warm lukewarm temperature, normal room temperature water, so cool-ish water. Uh, so my metal, metal pellet should be giving off heat, so that change being negative is not a big surprise. Equals negative. And that's all. I don't have any information about heat. I don't have any information about the specific heat, that's what I'm looking for. Uh, so the hard thing is right now, I have an equation with four variables. And I want to find S, but I also need Q. I don't have a Q for the metal. So I'm gonna go ahead and take a look at the water. Um, I have the mass of the water, which is a hundred grams, because that was easy and a nice round number. Uh, the change in temperature i- here is gonna be, again, final minus initial, so twenty-six point two minus twenty-five, which is just one point two. And I do the specific heat of the water, create me that, four point one eight four. By the way, if you should need that, that might very well just be hanging out in the potentially useful information page. Or we put it in all the problems. I guess we put it in all the problems. Oh, there it is, one calorie. Sorry, one calorie to joules. It's also the specific heat of water. Um, it's in the problem, then, four point one eight four. I just wanted to check to make sure I had that memorized correctly. Joule per gram per degree Celsius. Um, so what we're gonna do, because we also know that the Q of pellets is gonna be equal and opposite of the Q of the water, I can solve for Q of the water. So that's what I'm gonna do. So I'm gonna be able to figure out the heats of the metal from the water. So that means I'm gonna take all the numbers I currently have for the water and use all the things for the water. So the specific heat, the four point one eight four. I'm just gonna double check that all my units are the same. Jewels, I'm just gonna keep track of. Grams, and grams is the same, and per degree, per degree. The mass is a hundred, and the change in temperature is one point two. Four point one eight four. And I get Q of the water to be positive five hundred two point oh eight. That's in joules. I'm gonna do that math just one more time, because I have not done this problem before. I made a bunch of numbers. I got the same number twice, that's makes me feel better. So there's my heat of the water. Heat of the water is gonna be the same but opposite of the pellet, so that means if I want Q of the pellet, it should just be negative five oh two point oh eight. So now I have negative five oh two point oh eight is equal to, now I want everything of the pellet. Uh, so the mass is two point five grams. Uh, the specific key is what I'm solving for, and the change in temperature is negative sixty-two point eight. Negative sixty-two point eight. Those negative signs should cancel. I thought that was gonna happen. Really high specific heat, because the mass was too small. It's fine. So my calculator spits out this number. Uh, I'm gonna wind up rounding that to about three point two. Jewels per gram per degree Celsius. So, there's a calorimetry problem. So things to keep track of, so in these sorts of problems, it is a lot of math. There are a lot of numbers flying around. The most important thing is to keep track of your numbers, so that when you're trying to look for the the heat of the water, you're using all the numbers associated with water. When you're then looking for the pellet, you're using all the numbers associated with the pellet. Um, so it's making sure you're keeping all the numbers straight, and using the same values for the same pieces as you go through. Any other questions in the chat so far?
There are no questions right now.
Okay. Okay, Charlotte Curious, this is relatively common for the Monday after fall break, just in case you wondered. Um, let's go ahead and do some gas questions. Um, oh, I meant to prep. Okay. A balloon um, has a volume of thirty-two point two liters. That's a weird number, but we're just gonna roll with it. And contains, I don't know, forty-nine point eight moles of nitrogen. Gas. If another ten moles is added to the balloon, what will be the final volume? Make it bigger, so people can actually see it. Okay, so, couple things. Uh, one, what on earth are we doing now? So, this says, there's a gas, that's great. This now suddenly has liters and moles, and is asking about volume. And it said that's a balloon. Uh, this is one of the few times that the word, that the story part of the problem may help you out. Because this could be a titration problem. It's got moles and liters in it. It could be a molarity question, but it's not, because it's about gases. Um, so it's got the word gas, and it's talking about a balloon, so this is a gas problem. Since it's a gas problem, we're gonna write down the gas equation. Now, the other fun part. There's two main types of gas problems. Uh, oh, three. Sorry, there are three main types of gas problems. Um, that involve numbers, that involve numbers. This is the kind where you have, I like to think of this as a changing scenario. Something changed. Type one, something changed. What I mean by this is you have an initial set of conditions and a second set of conditions. So initially, you have a volume of thirty-two point two liters and a number of moles of forty-nine point, forty-nine point eight moles. Then something changes, and you have a new volume. Ten moles are added, so forty-two point two liters. And you've got a new, oh, sorry, that's the, that's the number of moles. Moles are added, so that is fifty-nine point eight moles total, and your volume is the thing that we are looking for. So this is one kind of gas law problem where something has changed. So we have an initial set of conditions and a final set of conditions. Well, PV equals NRT doesn't have beginnings and endings. Or does it? We gotta fix this. We're gonna fix it. Um, so for PV equals RT, P is for pressure. B is for volume. N is for moles. T is for temperature. In Kelvin, in Kelvin, always in Kelvin. R is the gas constant. By the way, that sing-songy voice is how you can tell I've been talking to myself a little too much. That's okay. So. I need beginning, I need initials and finals. I don't have those. We're gonna fix it, don't worry. Um, so what we're gonna do is the gas constant, it's a constant, so we're gonna solve for the constant. And the beautiful thing about solving for the constant is an initial set of conditions would be equal to the constant, and a second set of conditions would also be equal to the constant. So I actually don't need the constant in this case, because it's gonna remain the same, no matter what I do. So all I really have to worry about is this P one V one over N one T one equals P two V two over N two T two. That's a lot of variables. We didn't use half of those in this problem. It never mentions the temperature. It never mentions the pressure. So what we're going to do is we're just gonna assume that the pressure and the temperature stayed the same. It's possible that the problem will be nice to you, and will actually tell you that. Or it might look like this one, where it's assumed that because they didn't tell you anything different, you're gonna assume that the pressure and the temperature stayed the same. So, because the pressure is staying the same, and the temperature is staying the same, we're just gonna get rid of these. Uh, because it's the same on both sides, so I could essentially just divide both things by the pressure, multiply both things by the temperature, but it's gonna be identical, so we're just gonna get rid of those. So that leaves me with V one over N one, not in in. Oh, come on, Microsoft Teams. There we go. Those of you that don't have me in lecture, you have not experienced the fact that sometimes talking and writing is a different skill. So there's my equation. So I started with PV equals NRT. I set things equal to R, so that I could have a beginning and an ending, and then I got rid of the variables I wasn't going to use. We're gonna assume that they're the same. Because really, this is probably something like a hot air balloon, and you're blowing it up outside, and the pressure's gonna be one atmosphere, and not gonna change, and the temperature's gonna, so the temperature stays the same. So now all I have to do is plug things in. The beautiful thing, when you don't have the gas constant involved, is as long as it's, temperature still has to be in Kelvin, temperature always has to be in Kelvin, but your volume could be in liters, could be in milliliters, as long as the units match, and that in temperatures in Kelvin, everything will be fine. So this is thirty-two point two divided by forty-nine point eight is equal to X, I don't know what the volume is, and fifty-nine point eight. Solve. Go. Go, go gadget calculator. Now, this is the part where it is nice to take a moment and say, okay, so I had a balloon, it had some gas in it, and then I added more moles of gas. Is that what should happen to my balloon? Do I have actual, I do have actual balloons here, haha. So, this is actually like blowing up a balloon, because I have it within arm's reach. Um, so this has some gas in it, and then I'm going to blow more into it. So my volume increases as I add moles of gas to the balloon. So, since I was adding moles of gas in the problem, ten moles were added, this is not ten moles of gas. That means my balloon should get larger, and it does. So it started off at thirty-two point two liters, and it grew, it grew to thirty-eight point six. grew, it grew to thirty-eight point six. So that looks pretty good. Uh, it at least went in the correct direction, which is a nice double check. So that was one type of gas problem. Um, also, as we were going through, I was definitely thinking about other types of gas problems. Um. So we'll go ahead and at least do the other one where we actually use PV equals NRT. Um. A, we'll just keep using balloons. Uh, a balloon holds, um, three point nine moles of gas at a temperature of twenty-five C, um, at six hundred and seven hundred and sixty tor. Um, moles, volume, yeah, what is the volume of the balloon? So this one, even though I forgot the the sign, there we go. Um, so this question does have more hints, so it's a gas problem. Um, so there's the word balloon again, there's the word gas again. There's a couple of other pieces though, which is now we actually have the word tor. Um, tor is a unit of pressure. Unit for pressure. Uh, and anytime we see a unit for pressure, that has to be a gas problem. It's not hanging out in chapters nine or ten. That tor or atmospheres or PSI or bar or kilopascals only in chapter eleven. So that's part of the way we might know what to do. Um, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna grab the numbers out of the problem. I've got a number for moles, three point nine. I have a temperature, that's in Celsius. I have to fix it. I have to fix it. Honestly, for your gas law problems, it is best if you just go ahead and you're like, ooh, Celsius. You are of no use to me in a gas law problem. Um. Pressure is in tor, ew. Uh, volume is what we're looking for. So this, so again, it's a gas problem, so we're gonna grab PV equals NRT. And take a look. And we in fact have pressure and moles and temperature and we would like the volume and R is gonna come from the potentially useful information page. Boom, right there. Um, I do want things that match the units I have, so I have units and liters, atmospheres divided by moles Kelvin. So I do wanna go ahead and make sure that I add my gas constant into this list of things that I have. I pulled it from the potentially useful information page, though. You do not need to memorize that. Leaders, atmospheres, moles, Kelvin. Um, moles is moles. I got that. That's fine. That's good. Uh, Kelvin, I did. That's great. Uh, tor. That's not atmospheres. I have to fix that. So I'm gonna have this being seven sixty tor. And I would really like one atmosphere up here because that's what's gonna be on my potentially useful information page. One atmosphere is, oh, look, seven sixty tor, because I was not very creative when I made this problem. So I did in fact just use the same number. Anyway, so this is one atmosphere. This is gonna make our math a little bit more straightforward. Uh, oh. Come on, OneNote. I have to close OneNote. Sorry. Microsoft product on a Mac. There we go. Okay. So we are using the potentially useful information page to grab the definition of one atmosphere, to grab the conversion factor, one atmosphere and seven sixty tor. Nope, I don't need the internet. Thanks for asking. Um, I don't need Microsoft Teams either. All I need, Microsoft Teams. OneNote, there we go. Um, this is just one atmosphere. So now I basically should have all of the pieces and I just plug in. Um, so the main part here is to double check that all of your units match. So this becomes one atmosphere times the volume that I'm looking for is equal to three point nine moles times the gas constant. Eight two oh six times the temperature in Kelvin, two ninety-eight. Solve for volume. So the, the gas law questions. Um, again, the nice thing is we'll give you PV equals NRT, just to pull out the numbers and investigate what's going on. So do you make certain you take the time to write your numbers down correctly? Do you make sure you convert from Celsius to Kelvin? Because you will need that. Also, since I'm using my gas constant, that means that I am in liters at the end of this problem. Now I'm out of tea. Oh. Oh, it's mine. I have water. Other problems. Ooh, my favorites. Um. So it's always a little weird and we don't always, oh, wait, the other one. Um, sorry. Make myself, I'm gonna make myself a note. Um. Using volumes. We don't always do that one. Uh, STP we usually do. And then partial pressures, don't forget partial pressures. So sorry, that's five kinds of gas law problems. I started with three because I was thinking about the first one we did with the final and initial conditions. Other than what we just did where you just used PV equals RT, and then I was thinking about partial pressures. Because these other two, I don't know that they count as different kinds of problems, but let's see. Let's do them. I'm gonna do. Let's do the STP one, because if I was supposed to look at the exam questions over fall break, did I? No. So I haven't looked at your exam yet. I'm supposed to have reviewed the entire thing before nine PM tonight. Hmm, sure. Uh, but let's go ahead and do STP. STP stands for standard temperature and pressure. Um, we're gonna put this in parentheses for gases. Because only for gases do we call that STP. Um, no, actually not true. Uh, anyway, standard temperature and pressure for gases, because this will be different engine Kim two when we do thermodynamics and I'm sorry about that. Uh, standard temperature and pressure for gases is one atmosphere of pressure and zero degrees Celsius. Which therefore means it's two seventy-three point one five Kelvin. Um. That's standard temperature and pressure. There is this other piece of information that some people have memorized from high school. Um. I personally am not a fan of memorizing the STP you didn't memorize. Hey, we found another thing to memorize. Told you that would happen. So you do have to memorize what STP stands for, standard temperature and pressure, zero degrees Celsius, one atmosphere. So the zero degrees Celsius and one atmosphere, some people have memorized that, uh, one mole of gas at STP is equal to twenty-two point four liters. Didn't even memorize that when I was in high school. It can sometimes save you time if you have that memorized. So if you are a person who is worried about time and you like memorizing, then this thing is for you. Uh, because it is common that we will write a question that looks something like this. I keep asking about volume, heavens. Um, what is the volume of a weird number, seven point eight moles of gas at STP? Question looks really short. Um. So this is what that question typically looks like. What's the volume of seven point eight moles of gas at STP? Um, so if you have memorized one mole of gas, uh, is twenty-two point four liters at STP, then it looks like this. Seven point eight moles for every one mole. You have twenty-two point four liters. Seven point eight times twenty-two point four is equal to a hundred and seventy-four point seven two liters. Done. If you don't have that memorized, then it looks something like this. Um. PV equals NRT. Uh, STP means my pressure is one atmosphere. My volume is what I'm solving for. My number of moles is seven point eight moles. My gas constant is from the potentially useful information page, so I'm not memorizing it. Uh, I'm just looking it up. Zero point zero, but I am gonna write it correctly. Zero point zero eight two oh six. Um, and temperatures for STP is zero degrees Celsius, which is two seventy-three point one five Kelvin. Volume is equal to seven point eight times zero point eight two oh six times two seventy-three point one five. Volume equals one seventy-four point eight liters. For the record, when I do your exam, I will do questions at STP both ways, both using the numerized twenty-two point four and solving it out with PV equals NRT, because I teach my class that either one should work. So therefore, when I do your exam, I make sure that either one works. Um. It's one hundred and seventy-two point seven and a hundred and, or sorry, one seventy-four point seven and one seventy-four point eight. Close to the same number. On the exam, then the multiple choice might very well just be one seventy-five, so that they're both the same. They round up to the same number. Uh, or if not, they're, you don't have to pick between those two on the exam. Um, that's what an STP problem looks like. Other questions out of the chat at this point?
There's still none right now.
Okay, cool. No worries. We're mostly nearing that like towards the end, so if anybody had hopped in there, now is the time. Otherwise, we're gonna keep going down the list. I like lists. Uh, we'll do partial pressures and then if there's time left over, we'll do using volumes. Um, so partial pressures. These problems can look, so the idea, so first of all, the idea of partial pressures. Partial pressures. First of all, what on earth is that? Um, so partial pressures. This is you, this is typically used when we think about the air that we breathe. So when we breathe air, I realize I'm trying a box, but when we breathe air, um. For every like ten moles of air, you're gonna expect like eight moles of nitrogen. And say like two moles of oxygen. So if I have a box, that ratio then is four nitrogens, one, two, three, four, and two, one oxygen. I could talk about the pressure of the nitrogen and I could talk about the pressure of the oxygen. I could also talk about them together and then they would be the total pressure. So if I'm talking about partial pressure, the partial pressure would be the pressure, say, of oxygen divided by total pressure. Uh, wait, no. Sorry, that's often how we talk about things as percentages. Stop it, stop it, stop it. Um, but if I wanna talk about the partial pressure of oxygen, so let's say that I have a grand total of one atmosphere. And here my partial pressure of oxygen is just zero point two atmospheres. Um, my pressure then, as I said, then I could ask like, what is the pressure of nitrogen? And one atmosphere is my total pressure. So if my total pressure is one atmosphere and my total pressure is just equal to the individual pressures added up together, the pressure of my nitrogen plus the pressure of my oxygen, one equals the thing I'm looking for plus zero point two. That means the thing that I'm looking for is equal to zero point eight. I can do a little bit of subtraction there. Um, to, to solve that. Zero point eight is equal to the pressure of nitrogen. It's gonna go away. Uh, OneNote. Um. So partial pressures are or can be as straightforward as, hey, we're gonna add these together, we're gonna solve for the one that's missing. So they can be as straightforward as that. They can also get a little bit fancier. And the way that they get a little bit fancier, um, is if we combine that with mole fraction. Because, that's actually where the other thing was gonna head. Um, because it turns out that the partial pressure of whatever I wanna talk about, divided by the total pressure is equal to this thing we call the mole fraction. It's called mole fraction. I know that may sound like a weird name. It actually has a pretty good name. Because the mole fraction is also equal to the moles of oxygen, if that's what we're talking about, divided by total moles. So for example, we've, if we're still using the same general idea. And I went ahead and said, okay, so we're gonna say that we still know that the partial pressure of oxygen is zero point two, that the total pressure is one atmosphere. But now let's go ahead and say that I have, um, one mole of oxygen. I could ask, what's the total number of moles? So essentially it gives me another set of equations, another set of relationships that we could potentially explore. Uh, so in that case, I really am just using this general idea. Where I would have my zero point two for my partial pressure of oxygen divided by my total pressure um, is equal to my number of moles of my oxygen, which you can tell that I'm a little tired, because that's one divided by X. Uh, lots of different ways to solve for this, uh, but this basically was being point two divided by one over X. Um, so X is also equal to one over zero point two. So my total number of moles here would be five. So that gives me some options in how all of this works, gives me some options to, to work on all of that. Deep breath. So partial pressures um, can be straightforward, can also involve mole fraction, in which case it's not often as straightforward, but usually not too bad. Then what's the last thing I mentioned? Ah, volumes. Mentioned using volumes. Um, so this is the one that honestly we don't do very often because, um, honestly, because there's just, there's more interesting questions to ask. Why would we ask you this if we could do more calorimetry? Um, but it's kind of fun. Um, also, I think the first time that I learned that you could do this, my first response was like, what? You can do this? So I, I just like it. Um, fully, fully, full disclosure, I just think that this is cool. Did they sign me gas problems this time? No. Um. I really like to write gas law problems, though. I think gas law problems are super fun to write. That's not what they gave me. Um. That's fine, we'll get them next time. So here's a lovely balanced chemical reaction. And we could give some information like this. Um. Let's say that I have, um, five hundred milliliters of hydrogen gas reacts with an excess of nitrogen gas. Um. How many milliliters of ammonia are produced? And that's all it says. That's all it says. Maybe we're nicer. Ah, we're probably nicer than that. Um, produced, I will go ahead and say if the reaction's got STP. The thing I love about this problem is when we look at dealing with gases, we've dealt with chemical reactions before, and we've talked about the fact that we could do one molecule of nitrogen and three molecules of hydrogen produce two molecules of ammonia. And we could say that there's one mole of nitrogen reacts with three moles of hydrogen producing two moles of ammonia. Well, because we now have that relationship of PV equals NRT. As long as everything's staying the same, my pressure's staying the same, my temperature's staying the same, I have a lovely relationship between volume and moles. So I could convert everything if we wanted to. Well, we don't have to. If I have five hundred milliliters of hydrogen gas. Whoop, sorry. Sometimes with my tablet. Um, there are three volumes. I just wrote it like that, three volumes of hydrogen for every two volumes of ammonia. It doesn't matter if it's in milliliters or liters or gallons or balloons. I mean, they would need to be the same size balloon. Um, doesn't matter. Divided by three, times two, three hundred thirty-three point three. Milliliters. Done. And if you want, you, you can go ahead and take the milliliters of hydrogen and find the moles of hydrogen with PV equals NRT. And then once you found the moles, you could do the stoichiometry, and then you could push it all back. But there, there's no reason to because volume and moles are the only thing that are gonna change, and the rest of it's just gonna be constant, and everything's multiplied by each other. Doesn't matter. So, yeah, you can absolutely do stoichiometry of gases and leave it all in volume. It works great as long as all the volumes are the same. So as long as everything stays in milliliters or stays in liters, everything's good, everything's fine. Nobody asked me to do a titration problem. That's okay with me. I don't have to do a titration problem. I can. Um, sorry, this is me staring at the clock. If you can't, um, see the look on my face, like, what should I do in seven, six minutes? By the way, the same thing goes through my head when I'm teaching class, is I, I do keep an eye on the time, um, except for today. I ran, I ran right to time. Um. But a lot of times I'm keeping an eye on the time, and I'm like, okay, what can I safely do in like six minutes? Ah, I don't know that I can do a titration problem in six minutes. Hmm. What's in, what else is in here? Ah, we didn't do, oh, let's do one of those. It's not a titration problem, but let's let's do a stoichiometry problem with mol, with molarity. Oh, I like them, but let's do it. Um. That's just gonna be a titration problem. I can do it in six minutes. Suddenly, I think I can do this. Um, okay, here we go. Did it work? You know, my phone tried to pick up my audio. Does it say I'm muted? Doesn't say I'm muted. Gonna assume everything's okay. Also, I have five minutes left, so if everything has gone terribly wrong. Are there any questions in the chat?
There are none.
Okay. Hey, I heard you, you heard me. Things are good. All right. Um, so let's go ahead and do something that involves molarity. Um. Oh, I've used sodium hydroxide so many times. Um. A twenty-five milliliter solution of sodium hydroxide is, um, you know, molarity, zero point five molar solution of sodium hydroxide is completely neutralized by um a zero point three four molar HCl solution. Um, how much HCl was needed? So this is a titration question. The re, the way that I know that's a titration question, um, or that we can think about it like that is because it does say completely neutralized. Um, I also know that because I have malarities and volumes and malarities. Honestly, it doesn't really matter that this is a strong base. Um. You, you can write that down cuz it, it is. This is a strong base, this is a strong acid. These are ways that I know what kind of problem it is. Is that memorized strong acid, that memorized strong base. Um, but that completely neutralized is gonna be one of the big, uh, hints to me, and in fact, I've got lots of malarities and volumes. So the thing is, is that when it's completely neutralized, this means that my moles of hydroxide are equal to my moles of H plus. That's the only thing that that completely neutralized means. Notice that this is not moles of acid and moles of base. Um, now, one of the beautiful things here, though, is that my sodium hydroxide is in a one-to-one ratio with the hydroxide. So my sodium hydroxide only produces one hydroxide. So moles of hydroxide is gonna be equal to moles of sodium hydroxide because this is a one-to-one ratio. Same thing with the HCl that I chose. That hydrochloric acid is a strong acid, it produces one proton. So here, this is true. Um, I will just take a moment to point out the fact that if I had made this a different base, this might not always be true. So if I had something like barium hydroxide, barium hydroxide, um, my moles of barium hydroxide gives me two hydroxides uh, because of this subscript here. So just do be aware that while what I have here with the barium would be a different scenario, it would be something completely different. But what I have here, everything's a one-to-one ratio. The moles of sodium hydroxide are the same as the hydroxide, the hydroxide moles are gonna equal my protons, and my protons do in fact equal my HCl because everything here is in a one-to-one ratio. If that's true, I could actually use M one V one equals M two V two. But I'm not gonna, because I'm, I'm gonna show off the other way. Um, so I'm gonna take my molarity, and I'm just gonna multiply it by my volume in liters because that's gonna get me moles. Cuz one of the things I have here is the goal is moles. So everything over here is all about moles. So I am in fact gonna go ahead and look for those moles. So here's moles technically of hydroxide, and again, actually, it's moles of sodium hydroxide, which is also here moles of hydroxide, which means it's also moles of H plus, which means here that since the HCl's all the same, it's also the moles of HCl. They're all the same in this particular problem. So since I wanted moles of HCl, so that I could figure out how much volume is needed, um, essentially, we're just now backtracking. So I have that molarity, um, times my volume would be equal to moles. So all we're gonna do is swap those around. Um, and essentially, my volume will be equal to moles divided by molarity. Um, we're just switching around, molarity is equal to moles divided by volume, by the way, we're just been moving stuff around. So volume is what I want from the problem. Uh, I solved for moles, zero, one, two, five, and my molarity from the problem is zero point three four. This is gonna get me a number in, um, liters. So just do be aware as you're solving things like this, uh, of what your units are in. Because I went ahead and went to liters, this is in liters. So if I wanted milliliters, I just need to go ahead and, um, convert that over to milliliters, if that's what we need. Okay. It is seven oh one. So I'm gonna go ahead and end there. Any questions, any thoughts, other things?
No questions.
All right. Nope, it doesn't look like there are any other questions. That happens after fall break. That's okay.
Well, we still had some questions, which is good.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Dr. Taylor. Thank you, everyone who attended. Um, this session will also be available on YouTube, um, shortly after the session ends. Um, so be on the lookout for that on the LLC YouTube channel. Um, and then if there are any lingering questions, um, if you reach out to Dr. Taylor or to the LLC team, um, we can send those over to Dr. Taylor, and then, um, those might be able to be answered in a follow-up video. So just let us know if you have any remaining questions. Okay, thank you all so much. Have a great night.
Excellent, you too, you too. Good night.